Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the August 12th meeting of the East Temple Township Planning Commission. For those in the in the tenants at the township building, which please rise, join me in saluting the flag to start the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, just for everybody's information, if you don't already know, this is a combination live meeting here at the township building as well as a Zoom meeting. So everything will be monitored for audio and visual and will be recorded so we can get the minutes taken properly. Before we get into the action items for this evening, we need to take care of a couple housekeeping things. We do have one absent member this evening. So in the place of Jim Hackett, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Will serve as a voting member this evening. Okay. And also, we need to take action on the minutes from our last meeting, which was on July 8. I think I've noticed a couple of things, John, that are in air. And they have to do with who was here and who wasn't. Mrs. Will was not here. And I believe Mr. Hack and Mr. Palakowski were here. Matt, you were here, right?
I was.
Yeah, because you made motions or seconded for motions. For the last meeting, Matt, you couldn't get in, you couldn't get into the building.
No, last meeting, I was Zoom, we did Zoom.
Okay. And I don't think Mr. Hackett was here. Okay, I had, I had him on my list, I had him listed as here.
I remember him.
He may have, I think he, I think he joined late, remember he?
Late.
That's right, okay. All right, I'll make those corrections. Okay, so two in and one out. Does anybody else have any additions or changes to make?
I didn't, I'll make a motion for chairman that we approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we approve the minutes of the July 8th meeting as amended for attendance. Mr. Beck, would you take a roll call?
Mrs. Will? I believe you should probably be upstairs. Mr. Deadder? Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
So that's 601.
Correct.
Okay, this evening's action items include four plans or three plans and an ordinance review. First one is Lancaster County Motors Stormwater Management Plan. We have somebody to present that one?
Mr. Chairman, we're unable to hear them from the Zoom functions.
No.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay, might as well, yeah, might as well, just for the record. We'll take the modifications first, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're unable to hear anything that's being said.
Give us a moment. Cindy, you can, can you hear John? Cindy, can you hear me?
I can hear you, I cannot hear John. Perhaps they could stand at the end of John's table and use that microphone?
Oh, do that.
That, that mic over there, John's, your right?
That, yeah.
Yeah. Can you lift?
Sorry for the inconvenience, but.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Very well.
Let's see, are you, are you Amanda Goff?
Yes. Do you want me to start at the modifications or?
Let's start with modifications.
Okay, the first modification is of the S Aldo section 265-8.7. H. Point 2. B.
Cindy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, the mics were off.
Still okay?
Yes.
Cindy, can you, okay.
So I believe I was on S Aldo section with the number, and that's regarding the buffer planting strip B. And we're proposing an alternate design to the buffer on the north and the west property or property lines, because there's an existing wooded buffer on the eastern side of the property. All of the surrounding properties are commercial, and so we're proposing basically a modified version of the buffer that's required, which we will adequately screen the surrounding commercial properties. Are there any questions regarding like?
John, can we see any of these plans?
I did bring a plan if.
I think it would be good for everybody to view it on screen if we can.
A moment, yeah.
I believe it's sheet three, the layout and landscaping.
Is it sheet three?
Correct. Okay, so this eastern property line doesn't show up too well over here, but.
It's probably easier if you point back there.
The eastern property line here has a stream, and that's all wooded right now. So that's why we don't have any proposed buffering on that side, because it's already existing. And then on the north, the west sides here, we have a modified buffer, I believe it's 10 feet wide. Property line. So since it's, sorry, can you still hear me? Okay. Since it's only 10 feet wide, that's why we have more shrubs and less of the larger trees. Tried to pick the larger shrubs as good and fit in as many of the larger trees as we could. But there.
And why is it a reduced width?
It was only required to have 10 foot between the pavement and the property line.
Okay.
We had discussed that with the township engineer, and they suggested providing the modified buffer, especially since it's commercial uses on all sides.
Yeah, to your west would be the old Core States Operating Center, right, Bank Center.
I'm not sure.
Not sure what it was.
It was labeled as the Lancaster General Hospital, I believe.
Yeah, that's the old Core States.
The old Core States Bank. Which is fenced.
Yeah, LGH just acquired that property and is doing some modifications to it for medical offices, not necessarily patient care, but for administrative offices.
There is actually fence up here on this property to the north. Off the property line, but there pavement there.
John, I don't have the comments from Scott in front of me from township engineers or anything with note?
He was, oh, you got him up there.
Got him up, yeah.
Have any issues with this?
Scott Hane is available, if you have any questions. Mrs. Groff, you were just talking about modification two then, right?
Correct, yeah.
Do you want to talk at all about number one?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I had it listed as number two for me, but it was stormwater section 260-14.1.2. C regarding the loading ratios. And in karst areas, you're required to have three to one impervious and five to one total. And we're proposing slightly higher five to one impervious and 7.7 to one total for the infiltration basin. And the geologist did provide a letter to support the higher loading ratios.
Does anybody, any commission commissioner have questions? Anybody in the audience here at township building? Cindy, is there anybody requesting input on chat?
There is not.
Okay. There's no further discussion, then I'm ready to take motions on these modifications.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications one and two, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Deadder, that we recommend approval of modifications one and two, subject to staff and engineers comments. Mr. Beck, follow the roll.
Mrs. Will? Mr. Deadder? Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Seven to zero in favor of the motion?
Seven to zero, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, the next plan is for 701 Stony Battery Road Final Land Development Plan. We have some modifications in the plan itself. Remove my mask if that's okay. Cindy, can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
Thank you. I didn't want to have to introduce myself five times. Good evening, my name's Andrew Miller with Ritu Associates here this evening on behalf of 701 Stony Battery Road LLC. Subject is our land development project for a property located at 701 Stony Battery Road, which is in the enterprise zone. With me this evening, if any questions would arise that you'd like addressed by the who's principal and Aaron Repucci, who is a partner and director of development, both with 701 Stony Battery Road LLC. So the purpose of our brief presentation this evening is to discuss the land development plan for this project, the final land development plan, and seek your recommendations for approval to the board, as well as the modifications that we have this evening. Just to step back in time and give you a little bit of the background on this project, this is, I'll get into the location and so forth. However, we did submit in October 16th of 2019, conditional use. We had a hearing and we were approved at that time for the proposed facility to be used under the heavy industrial classification in the enterprise zone. So that afforded us the ability due to having over 500,000 square foot of impervious on the site, as well as granting us the heavy industrial designation for rail access, if that should be deemed necessary by a user. So both of those are permitted in the enterprise zone with, with the conditional use approval. We've come back then on August 5th of this year 2020, and we've amended that conditional use decision to ask for an additional approval to permit truck deliveries in excess of 50 per day. And that is simply for the purposes to give us some additional capacity for truck deliveries to the site, which is more in compliance with the, the recent ITE distributions of vehicle passenger cars versus trucks to a site of this nature. And that was voted on, on August 5th. We have not received the written decision yet with the final letters and, and I's dotted and T's crossed on the, all the conditions. So we don't have those listed on the plan at this time, but there's nothing in there that we foresee to be an issue that that would be a showstopper at this point. So I just wanted to bring the commission up to speed on that. In September of 2019, we submitted our final land development plan to the township, and we've been working through the technical comments with your, with staff and with Scott at David Miller Associates since that time. And just as a high level, we have received our NPDS approval, sewage planning exemption approval and so forth for the project. So specifically, that Scott or John has it up on the screen now, the parcel we're discussing this evening is directly across from Steeplechase Road in West Hemfield Township. In West Hemfield, the township line runs down the center of Stony Battery Road. It's approximately 18.7 acres in size, and it's currently existing agricultural use. If you recall, several months to a year ago, we were here for the property to the north, which is 601 Stony Battery Road, which is currently under construction, has been actively moving earth out there, and you'll soon see the, the building starting to come out of the ground. On the east side of our property is existing rail line and a PPL right of way. And to the northeast campus zone is where the Hemfield School District campus sits, just to give you a relation to, to what's in the area. To the south of our site, immediately to the south and continues down to where Knoll Road comes out, is 791 Stony Battery Road. That is also subject to a land development plan that we've submitted and a conditional use that's been in front of the township. So we're not quite as far along with the technical aspects of that project as we are this one, but I'm sure we'll be in front of you very shortly for that project. The building that we're proposing is a spec facility, so it's 251,000 square feet. There is no user defined yet, so the applicant is searching for a tenant to occupy it, or someone that wants to come in and purchase the property after it's entitled. So we don't have a tenant immediately to speak of, but as customary with these types of projects, you need to have the entitlements in hand and be ready to move dirt when that occupant does want to take, take over the land. For a loading standpoint, we have all of our loading spaces, similar to the other project on the east side of the building, our dock spaces and then our trailer storage spaces as well. We have 49 dock spaces and 54 trailer spaces to service the, the property. We also have 182 passenger vehicle spaces, which would be located on the west side of the building. We have landscaping and screening provided around the property, and that's subject to two of our modification requests we'll get to in a moment. We've also proposed in the hatched area across the front here, a eight foot wide asphalt pedestrian pathway that will then connect eventually to the 601 property and eventually to the 791 property to the south as well. And we'll discuss that as one of the modification requests as well. With a building of this size, we also have a fire pump house and a water tank located in the southeast corner to supplement for fire flow. We have one point of access, as I discussed, onto a collector road, which is Stony Battery Road. Specific to the conditional use approval for over 500,000 square foot, our actual impervious cover is 517,000 square foot. So that required us to get that 500,000 square foot conditional use. However, our impervious coverage is only 64%, where the maximum allowable is 70%. So even though we're over the threshold of 500, we're still below the, the bulk zoning requirements. The conditions of the original conditional approval from October 2019 had that the applicant would enter into an agreement and pay a fee in lieu for the widening of Stony Battery Road. And we are aware that the township's working to coordinate roadway project for all, all along Stony Battery Road on their side and with West Hemfield as well. So that is a condition that the applicant will satisfy prior to plan recording. We're in receipt of the latest review letter from David Miller Associates, which was dated August 3rd, and we actually resubmitted to the township and to a DMA on August 6th, addressing a few of the technical comments. So in our regard, there's only administrative comments remaining in that letter, and we see no issues with the remaining administrative comments. Entertain any questions about the project at this time before we get into the modifications, if you'd like to discuss those?
A question is, is the.
That would depend on the requirements of that tenant and what they work out with the applicant. That is correct.
Mr. Garringer, we're unable to hear your comments. You'll have to use a microphone. Thank you.
All right, I was wondering about timing, that will this plan go on record before there is a specific tenant for the property? And I'm just wondering, because another tenant may have some site changes that he needs to work with the site. The alternative would be to leave it sit as a conditional approval for some extended period of time.
And that would be a final decision by the, by the applicant, depending on, you know, they're actively always trying to get a, a user for the site. We have also discussed that due to the speculative nature of the development, that we understand that should a user come along who needs a totally different orientation or a, a drastic modification to the plan, that we may need to come back if the plan's already recorded and seek a modified plan to be processed. Same with the conditional uses, the conditional use approvals were simply just to be able to provide that level of additional, you know, use categories and options for a buyer to come to the site. Okay, if there's no other questions, go ahead with the, walk us through the modifications, please. Okay, and I'll take the modifications in order as they were in the August 3rd DMA letter. First mod. The first modification is with regard to the plan being clearly and legibly drawn at a scale of one inch equals 50 foot. Our request is to be able to have overall sheets at one inch equal 60 feet, and the engineer has recommended approval of that. That was a similar mod, a lot of these modifications are very similar to what we had in the project to the north, given it's very similar size and scale and project scope. The next modification was with regard to paved sidewalks shall be provided on both sides of new streets and access drives for subdivisions and land developments located in the urban growth area zones, which this site is within. We're seeking a modification of this requirement to propose an eight foot wide multimodal path in lieu of a traditional sidewalk to be placed immediately adjacent to the curb line or the edge of the roadway. Number three, alternatives to the buffer planning requirements may be approved by Board of Supervisors, and alternative design shall be equal or more appropriate for the proposed development. We're requesting an alternative to the planting along the eastern side of the property, where immediately adjacent and within portions of the PPL easement. As you're aware, PPNL will come through and do whatever they please to any vegetation that's there. So in an interest to save some dollars and not have plants installed and then just removed down the road, we've seen, saw a modification on that, that was similar to what we did in 601, where we were adjacent to PPNL. Can you, can you explain the alternate then? Basically, what we did was instead of having the thickness and some of the high deciduous trees that would grow, we've reoriented the plants and made them more lower level plantings, more evergreens and things that have a little bit slower growth rate. When deciduous trees get large and they grow into their right of way, they come in and just hack them back and essentially kills them. So the plantings, the smaller plantings, are they outside of their right of way or in their right of way? They run the edge of the right of way. Okay. Number four, again, it goes along with the plantings, buffer strip planning, A, to provide, provide minimal screening through the use of trees, including shade trees, space one per 50 linear feet of the buffer strip. Again, we're asking for an alternative planting arrangement and species along that edge to not have those large deciduous trees every 50 feet. Are you still providing the same count elsewhere on the property? Were you cutting? There is other trees that have been added within the parking areas. There is, there is screening along each of the north and south property lines as well. But the trees that you're not planting on the 50 foot spacing, are they going to be planted elsewhere? So we'll get the same net number of new trees? We have not relocated those every 50 feet to another location on. Buffers have their own requirements already. Conditional plantings within those small strips, it may become. What about out on Stony Battery Road? Just plant street trees. There are street trees out there, and we also have to be cognizant of our stormwater basin and the pathway that we have out there. So we have a somewhat of a narrow strip along Stony Battery Road, along the western side of the property to fit any of that landscaping in. Would it be possible to pull up a landscaping plan? That should be one of the PDFs I sent you. If not, I think I have it on my board. If not, I think I have it on my board. So, this, this plan admittedly is a little busy. This has the lighting footprints on as well as the landscaping as well. Have the plantings along the northern and southern property line, and then we have a back here that's right adjacent to the PPL right-of-way. We do have a break point in here for stormwater and for access into the PPL right-of-way, which they required. And we do have street trees. Have them out here along the frontage as well. Landscaping in front of the car parking areas, just to block any headlights that might shine out onto the road. That was a request we added.
Any other comments on this one before we go on?
Letter number five, this was with regard to a request for deferral of the curbing requirement. And that'll be part of the deferral agreement along with the- to be installed when the roadway widening is done with that project. As well as within that application for sidewalk installation, again, our alternative is the eight-foot-wide pathway. And then next is the modification for roadway widening, which we have, will enter into an agreement for the fee in lieu for the roadway widening. So, that can be done when the township does their overall project. And then last one, which is actually new to this project, we did not have on the 601 project, was stormwater runoff should not be trans- fed to another unless there's subwatersheds of a common watershed. Basically, with the way that this, the plans- the way the existing, that's okay, the way the existing grade is on the site, the pre-developed watersheds, the way they split on the site, we're basically shifting how some of that discharge is done from a post-development standpoint, basically just the way that our basins are and the way the discharge points are on this site off the property. So, we had to kind of balance our stormwater and as well, we're infiltrating a lot of the runoff, and the storms are being attenuated out. So, there won't be an increase in, in any discharge leaving the site. It's just through different subwatersheds. And again, the engineer recommended approval of that one as well. So, that's all we have for the modifications. I'd be happy to entertain any questions about those.
You tell me more about, I read the county's comments on the sidewalks. You tell me, is there a plan that shows where that eight-foot path is going?
So, the eight-foot path-
Is that an asphalt path?
Yeah. So, the plan is it'll start, it'll connect up here to the 601 pathway. It'll follow down the frontage, cross the driveway, and then continue down and end at the property line. Then the next project would pick that up. So, the 791 project will pick that up and bring it down, run it along Knoll Road. So, it's part of the, in discussion with the town- plan to get walking pathways. A trail network isn't quite the right verbiage, but some type of walking pathways as much as they can along this section of roadway, given the narrowness of the roadway, proximity to schools, proximity to residential folks that like to get out and walk, and just the fact that that road right now has on their shoulder.
There would be a walking biking area all the way from Kaufman down to Knoll?
We're working on those details, Mr. Rohr. We're looking at opportunities to extend the path into the Mill Creek Development and then northward to the school.
And this, so this'll just be for this section that we're gonna, they're gonna-
For right now, yes.
And we're okay with the eight-foot asphalt?
Yes. We actually prefer that versus concrete because bi-tumulus is a little cheaper to replace. So, this will- in a lot of other projects, we have recommended bi-tumulus path rather than a concrete one, especially for a multimodal path due to the cost.
Is that, is this on your property or on the right-of-way, in the right-of-way?
No, this is, this is on the property, and we've granted an easement to the township for access maintenance and one similar to what was done for stormwater BMPs or that nature.
And would this, would this have to be replaced if the road is widened?
No.
No, it's far enough away that-
Correct. Most likely, the road will be widened before the bi-tumulus trail will go in.
And with that, as I stated, we just looked for your, your vote later on the modifications and then also recommendation on the plan to the supervisors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the commissioners? Does anybody in the audience have any comments or questions about the plan? Cindy, is there anybody on Zoom chat that would like to raise questions?
There's not.
Okay. And hearing no further discussions, I'm ready for a motion on the six modification.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to recommend approval of modification request number one, number two, number three, number four, number five, and six for the 701 Stony Battery Road Final Land Development Plan Township File Number 1908-03, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Palakowski, seconded by Mr. Deeter, that we recommend approval of modifications one, two, three, four, five, and six for the 701 Stony Battery Road Final Land Development Plan, subject to staff and engineers' comments. Mr. Beck, please call.
Mrs. Will? Mr. Deeter? Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Seven, zero in favor of the motion?
Seven, zero, yes. And now, we would need a motion to make a recommendation on the final plan.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Deeter, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the 701 Stony Battery Road Final Land Development Plan, subject to staff and engineers' comments. Mr. Beck, please call the rule.
Mrs. Will? Mr. Deeter? Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Seven, zero in favor?
Correct.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right. The third plan this evening is Dutch Valley Auto Works Final Land Development Plan and some modifications. Do we have, do we have modifications?
Evening. My name is Brent Good with ELA Group, representing Dutch Valley Auto Works. The applicants and owners being Jeff and Lori McCollum. At, first of all, can everybody hear me?
I can.
Okay.
Thank you. They are located, their address is at 3405 Columbia Avenue. The residence there, a single-family home, they live there. Also, Dutch Valley Auto Works, the commercial business is at 33331 Columbia Avenue. It is in the Community Business Center Zoning District. The site is, consists of two lots. Generally, at this point, a single-family home there is in the lower left-hand corner. And most of the remainder of the land is taken up by Dutch Valley Auto Works, auto repair and service business. There's a lot line right now that runs and separates the family home, runs north-south from Columbia Avenue, pretty much in the middle of the site. The entire area is about 3.5 acres. Mr. McCollum had gained approval to build, and we're proposing that as part of this plan. This is a subdivision lot add-on land development plan. Land development being only a proposal of a 45 by 45 garage square with a little bit of additional paving there. That had gained prior approval through the township. And there was a stormwater infiltration bed to the north of that that was already installed as part of another plan. So, the stormwater has already been taken care of. Mr. McCollum went to build the garage and, I guess we'd say, changed his mind. At first, he was going to build the garage as part of the residence, but decided then he wanted to have the garage as part of the commercial business. This then was determined to be a land development plan, wasn't quite as simple. And so, this particular plan was simply trying to subdivide off the residential, single-family home from the- that the garage can be used for- with the existing- that- that might be the system. Okay, thank you. Better, we did receive a letter from Scott Hain, 10th. There are some planned cleanup items that I reviewed that I do not see any problem with. Note that on page three, subdivision land development number one, depending how the schedule goes, we might need to add a time, ask for a time action on the plan. I'd like to draw your attention, though, to page four under streets and sidewalks. Mr. McCollum, like I said, has this small business. It's been there for quite some time, and again, he's just trying to build this 45 by 45 garage. By that, part of the- and in the comments here, and it's part of your ordinance, is that any subdivision land development requires curb and sidewalk and road widening improvement on the entire frontage along the street. Looking at the, the plan and measuring that, approximately 700 linear feet. Richardson Drive, which is considered a finer local street, and Columbia Avenue, which is a arterial roadway, which would also involve PennDOT. I would estimate for the work to be done for curb and sidewalk and the roadway, roadway widening to be somewhere between 50 to $70,000 for those. That is quite a financial burden to this small business. McCollum, this, what is- and I guess I'm going to ask that township believes would be better a waiver of apartments. I'd have to be able to- like to have some discussion about that.
Well, township does not grant waivers for curb and sidewalk necessarily. Normally, it's a modification. And a, and a deferral where it's installed within six months of being notified by the township. But there again, I'm going to ask Scott Hain to chime in because nor- nation of how we address those types of modifications.
Hello. Yeah, this is Scott Hain. John is- request would be made for relief of those sections. With the issuing of this letter, we simply stated what the requirements were. And then, we normally react to those requests for relief when they're submitted by the applicant for, for these types of projects. So, we, we did not get that request for relief. So, again, we simply posted the, the requirements within the letter.
Yeah, I was not aware of that requirement when we submitted the plan. That's something that we're definitely interested in asking for. Pass your opinion, though, on if I ask that modification. It'd, John, typical, a lot of municipalities that in fact, grant that or not so much grant that, but in fact, it would be a deferral. Do you see that as a possibility? That's where the-
It's certainly reasonable to consider. In most cases, we require a deferment agreement to be executed and recorded with the plan.
Clarification, like you said, John, if the township, for whatever reason, and that would be per the, per the agreement, of course, be spelled out in the agreement. Six months, if township feels justified to ask for the improvement.
That's correct.
We, we do that somewhat frequently, depending on the circumstances. Is there curb and sidewalk already there? Do we want to continue? Is, is the curbing needed for your stormwater management? You know, those are the kind of things that they're going to look at. But if the township did choose to, to add that in the future along that street, then they, then they, you would be required to put it in.
Yeah, right now, as I understand, there is no curb. Columbia Avenue is only 40 feet wide. Astral uses. So, that, that is a great concern to the- not having to do the extensive improvement.
Yeah, I would just submit a modification request for that.
So, the understanding is that-
Yeah. Pardon, pardon me, Brent.
Yeah.
Could you make sure Cindy informed me that you're fading in and out on the microphone? Thank you.
I mean, from the township perspective, we don't need extra curb and sidewalk that we have to maintain either in places where we don't have that.
Right. And as, as you may know, too, PennDOT doesn't want sidewalk. They usually try to force that outside of the right-of-way.
And if I may, we've, we had a similar project, Columbia Avenue, where automotive repair business ran into a similar situation. And again, with the bi-tumulus trail, that's where that came in. It was outside of the right-of-way, but it had a public access easement. And we do ask that any, any deferrals or deferments also include stormwater management in the current improvements to account for any curb and sidewalk that would go in at a later time.
That is, again, that's additional stormwater management that would be required to accommodate that future improvement, is what you're saying, John?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you for pointing that out.
But that would be done now, John, right?
That would be done now.
Far from the stormwater management for current-
Yeah. And, and Mr. McCollum, we, like I stated earlier, we did get approval and install, he had installed the- he had installed the stormwater management system for this garage that he wanted to build, but that would have to be expanded or another system or whatever to accommodate, you know, accompany or accommodate this widening or sidewalk and so forth is for now, is what you're saying. To get approval with the plan.
Yeah, I don't know the technical, how it would work, but that isn't the, the area where a bitumenous trail would be off the road. That's, that's pretty, that's low territory, isn't it?
I believe there's actually a wall in front of the.
Yeah.
Deep drive going into the business. There's actually retaining wall that's, I would say it's actually in the PennDOT right of way. So it must've been pretty old, you know, been there a while.
Right.
So that was probably would be challenging.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It would be very difficult.
Easement's one thing, but actually logically, practically putting a walkway there would be very challenging.
The object of the township's not to create a hardship, but you may have to, you know, we want to try to think ahead in the future as much as possible.
I would recommend that everything that you pointed out, Brett. Put that into your request and staff and Scott Hain and Dave Miller associates can review all that and come up with a good proposal for the project.
Okay.
Work it out with staff and then you can come back with a good solid plan.
You, your, one of your first comments was about the date for approval. What, what is the current date for taking action on this plan?
Know that we submitted, you know, June 12th.
We've got time, we've got plenty of time. Is it up at the beginning of Scott's note?
The 90 day date would be in September. So at, we, we would most likely with this issue, Brent, we would ask for a time extension.
Yeah, otherwise we would have to vote on it as it is. And that may not be the right way to go.
So offer a time extension, resubmit with the modifications and maybe even clean up the plan and do that a while. And I'll see with, what the owner wants to do. I'll let him know. He might be listening in, I'm not sure. See how he wants to proceed.
Question on a different area. So the entire tract is in enterprise?
Yes.
Including where the house is?
Yes, and that's a non-conforming use, a note that I need to put on.
I saw that in the write-up. So when you do the lot add-on, the resultant track with the house one, how big is that going to be?
Yeah, it's only 0.39 acres, but it does meet, does meet the zoning requirements for that zoning district in terms of that use.
So that's a viable enterprise lot?
No, it would be considered a non-conforming use.
But if somebody wanted to purchase it and put a business in there.
They could as.
They could do it in that size of lot?
Um, the, I'm bringing it up right now because I don't want to, I don't want to miss, I don't want to misspeak, but I'm fairly certain the, the enterprise zone does not have a minimum lot size, but I just want to confirm that.
I just, my concern would be the resultant track, we're creating a track that's not going to work for the future.
But if somebody wanted to live there.
If they want to live there, non-conforming, but it's.
Grandfather's.
Not the most desirable place to live either then unless that's your shop behind it.
And I, I am correct, the enterprise zone does not have a minimum lot area, but.
With the setback requirements in that zone, there would be enough square foot that somebody could do a.
I, I can't answer that. There's, there's a lot of things that go into a, depending on the project.
Yeah. So what is, what is the real driver to wanting to put this house off? To have the garage use?
What's the garage use for the commercial, with commercial use? So therefore technically asked to, it has to be on the same lot.
You cannot have, under the zoning ordinance, you cannot have a conforming use on the same lot as a non-conforming use.
That's why I'm here in front of you tonight. That's why we submitted the plan. That's the basis of the whole thing. And that's why Mr. McCollum doesn't want to have to do all this curb and sidewalk. He's just trying to add a garage, a smaller garage for the commercial use, but turning into more than I think he anticipated.
I'm afraid we're going to create a future. Tiny little enterprise lot.
Well, I'd, I'd also like to point out Brett wasn't part of this project back in 2015 and 2016, but this is the second time the planning commission is actually seeing this land development and subdivision plan. I remember it. Unfortunately, circumstances have changed. Mr. McCollum decided not to record the previously approved plan, which is, I'm pretty sure is almost exactly the same. Am I correct, Brett?
Not sure, John.
It, if it's, if it's not, it's, it's pretty darn close. It was just like I said, things changed and Mr. McCollum decided not to move forward and record that plan. And it's back before the township, planning commission and board again for a similar situation.
And you might be right.
And there, there are, there are site specific issues, technical issues that would, could warrant curb and waiver sidewalk, like the gray change, stormwater management's another one. If it's flowing, if it's a sheet flow type issue, rather than have curb there to continue the sheet flow. I'm glad you brought that up. I'll, I'll look at that, the old plan, Brett.
So if he did away with the lot line completely.
He could not do that. He could not.
He can't merge the two lots?
No.
Even if he went to the zoning hearing board?
Well, that's a different, that's a different ask. He went to the zoning hearing board. If he requested a variance to have a non-conforming use with a conforming use. It's quite possible.
But is it likely? Is it probable?
May prove everything.
Could you use some mic? Well. There are no, there is no minimum lot area.
That's the new lot for the house?
Sure.
Housing lot. I'm not sure why the housing lot doesn't.
Are we talking the same zoning districts? This is the community business center zone.
Oh, it's not enterprise?
It's difficult to see in the plan.
Community business center. That the, on Mr. Hain's letter on the first paragraph at the bottom.
Yeah, I apologize. I, I was. Because of Richardson Drive right there, I thought we were in the enterprise zone as well.
I believe that's just in the north.
Community business center zone? Community business center zone.
I, I'd like to see the applicant work this out with staff. Like can be some reasonable solution here. And bring it back to our commission. I'm not excited about creating a little tiny. Lot, commercial lot there. There's got to be a better solution than that.
So Mr. Yeringer, minimum lot with. It's 100 feet for agriculture, 20 feet for residential, 50 feet for civic social and 50 feet for business. There is no requirement for a minimum lot area. So the lot with would, would meet the CBC requirement.
Mr. Hain would have caught that. There's three zoning comments on, starting on page two at the bottom. As mentioned about the front, two front yards because it's a corner lot, but that, that won't be an issue to change the. With the lot, lot, the yard setback line. I really appreciate your discussion and openness and comments. That's helpful. We will, I'll go back to the owner, see how he wants to proceed. Get your input about the recommendation to talk to staff. I think that's a good, good recommendation. In fact, Mr. Deb brought up on the prior discussion possibly of a waiver. For that front area because of the wall that exists and the grade that's there and so forth. So something we'll consider. And when I resubmit, if we resubmit, we'll look at the mod, new modifications we're, we're asking about and then also an extension of time. Project active.
Let me ask John a question a different way, maybe. If they came in with this plan as it is now and did not. Offer or request to subdivide or change the lots. Would it be considered?
No.
Because you're saying it's two uses on one.
Mr. McCollum actually submitted a permit application and it was denied because of the fact that the garage would have been a commercial use on the same lot as a non-conforming use, which brings us to the point that he needed to file a land development plan and subdivision plan for the property.
Unless zoning hearing board, for instance, would allow.
Correct.
Okay.
But that's not a given.
Nothing's a given, no. But I'm just saying, it's been there for a long time as the combination of conforming and non-conforming. And now all of a sudden we're. Making things difficult.
Oh, yes.
You think that?
Yes, they would. Would, I would venture to guess it would not get approved.
So, so why? Okay. Remember that comment when we get to our next, next, next items. Okay. I want to, I want to have that discussion there.
I, I would ask if the planning commission has any other guidance on the plan. I would hate to rehash anything. When Mr. Good comes back before the planning commission, whether it be in September or October, hopefully September.
I didn't have any issues with it, other than I just didn't like that little tiny lot being created.
Yeah, cause, cause with setbacks and everything. Whoever wants to do something with that property will be backing here for hardship because it's too small a property.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I think we've had good discussion, opened up a couple of cans of worms here and, but I think we, technically we need to table this. So if somebody would care to make such a motion.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We table the Dutch Valley Auto Works Final Plan Act.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we table the Dutch Valley Auto Works final land development plan till we get further clarification on some of the issues discussed tonight.
Mr. Beck?
Mrs. Will? Mr. Decker? Mr. Palakowski?
Hi.
Mr. Biggs?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi.
7-0 in favor of the motion.
Thank you. A fourth action item for this evening is Stobro Company's Zone Sign Ordinance text amendment.
Good evening. Claudia Thang from McNeese, Wallace and Newark. I'm here this evening on behalf of Stobro Company LP. Here with me in the room tonight is Steve Norman from Staffers of Kissel Hill. Stobro is the owner of the Staffers of Kissel Hill property. And then electronically joining us from Staffers is Del Boschnagle, as well as Randy Burgie from Horse Signs. We're here tonight to discuss a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that would facilitate some additional signage on the Staffers property and on some other properties in the regional commerce zoning district. But I'd like to start, if I could, by just providing a little bit of the history of, of how we got to be before respect to this matter. So we began having discussions with Staffers probably late last year, early this year about their desire to update some of the signage on their property. Looking back at the records that they maintained, I think they've been to the zoning hearing board five, six times dating back to the eighties with respect to signage on their property. So the discussion was, could we consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance that would facilitate future upgrades to their signage without needing to go to the zoning hearing board every time that there was a change? We had some conversations with the township, in particular with Mr. Beck about that in January 2020, and we had circulated some drafts of a proposed amendment of that, at that time. On February 11th, we did present our proposal to the planning committee to get some feedback and comments. And then our petition to amend the zoning ordinance was filed in May. The board accepted and referred it June 3rd to the county and township planning commissions. And on July 14th, the county planning commission did recommend approval of the amendment. Basically what this proposed amendment would do would create a new category of sign type called signs within a commercial development. A property would need to meet three criteria in order to qualify for these signs. It would need to be located in the regional commerce center zoning district, would have to be at least an acre in size, and it would have to have a principal commercial use. So we're looking here to provide a modification for larger scale commercial users within the RCC zone. The building signage concept is really the main change that we're proposing. And it's an extension of the concept that was used across the street at Lime Spring Square. So under the new proposal, each building would be entitled to two square feet of signage per one linear foot of exterior building wall space, up to a square feet per wall. The thing that would be unique about this amendment is there is no maximum number of signs and they're not needing to be in any particular location. In other words, the, the property owner can take the total amount of signage that would be permitted for the site and choose how they want to allocate it on the face of the building. Just for purposes of comparison, currently the zoning ordinance in the RCC district allows a maximum of one building sign per tenant, one, one foot of signage per linear foot of frontage up to a maximum of 200 square feet. So under that set of requirements, a building like Staffers would be allowed a 200 square foot sign, which obviously doesn't make sense for a property like this. And some of the other properties in, in the regional commerce zone come to mind as well, which is a G scale, commercial users. scale, uh, commercial users. In terms of freestanding signs, there would still only be one permitted per, uh, commercial development. However, if the property were to be bordered by one or more arterial or collector street, then a second sign would be allowed, uh, each of a maximum of 150 square feet. The amendment doesn't address sign height, window display signs, uh, digital signs, or any other type of signage besides just the freestanding and building sign. So it wouldn't deal with directional signage or anything of that nature. The goal really of this proposal would be to, uh, reduce trips to the zoning hearing board, allow for some more flexibility for commercial users in terms of how they're, uh, presenting their signage, uh, on the property. And, you know, it does serve one of the comp plan goals. Your comprehensive plan identifies a goal of adopting a new sign ordinance with greater flexibility for businesses and modern LED signs. So we're proposing this as a sort of test case, um, in working with the township that would allow township staff to, to see how businesses and users responded. Maybe it could be expanded to other areas of the township as well. John has up on the screen, um, an example of what the current signage is out at Staffers. And then the proposed, and I have several here on the board as well, and I'll just where you can see the frontage along Roystown Road on the bottom. Hard to even tell what it is. Okay, so the next sign that I'm bringing up is along Roystown Road, and currently we have a changeable letter sign out there, so it's part of the of the, an LED sign.
Buddy, are you gonna, are you gonna come back through these with questions, or should we ask as we go?
Yeah.
Cause I'm just thinking, as, as we look at it, might as well ask, get our comments out and ask questions. So, um, across the street, I believe, there's an LED sign similar to this. Why can't you use the existing ordinance that they're using over there to put that sign on your property? What?
That's, uh,
No.
It's specifically set up for a mixed-use development, and it's specific to a property that, or properties that are and the RCC zone. So it would not apply to the Staffers property.
Why do we do this? Christmas. We're gonna have, we're gonna have a sign ordinance just for Staffers. Or just for Loews. Or everybody on Centerville Road.
So I will say the way that we drafted this, we really worked with staff to try to make this really, I think the only thing that you would have to change size of the minimum size of the lot and things of that nature, but this should theoretically work.
Jim, could I?
Yes.
I, uh, over the years have changed my opinion on signage. And at one time I thought sign standards were fairly strict. What I'm seeing now, I think, is a gradual increase in permission for signs. And we're losing the scope as to what the purpose of the sign is. In my mind, there's outdoor signage. And outdoor signage is important to identify the use on the property. For people driving by and finding out that's where I need to turn, that's where the business is. I think an overuse of the signage is when you make the, or you allow the area of the sign to continue to grow, and it exceeds what's needed to identify the particular business on the property. Because of court decisions dealing more with, with freedom of speech, the, the township can't regulate the word to go on the sign. But when you continue to increase the signage area, the property owner has the ability to do much more than identify the use on the property. Uh, I, I think for me driving down Roystown Road to know I'm approaching the Staffers property would be important. For me to know that bananas are selling for a dollar a pound is more advertising than what is needed to identify the property. I, I look at the building sign, and it has Staffers, Staffers of Kissel Hill on it. And within a hundred feet or so, there's a pylon sign that says that. And also on the pylon sign is Home and Garden. And I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, if we're not repeating it. And then I'm, I'm looking at, you know, outdoor living. And, you know, not knowing if they're providing a spot for me to live outdoors or what, what that refers to. But if it's an important identification, why, why isn't it on the, as opposed to, uh, another building sign? Uh, you know, I think a great example of the township allowing more signage than what the property needs for identification purposes is right down the street at, at, uh, the Lime Springs Pylon sign, where it's being used as a billboard sign to advertise off-site businesses. If, if the property demands more identification, more signage, that's one thing. But when our standards allow more and more area for the signs, people start looking for what else I can put on the sign. Now, simply, why is it important to not have all this information on the sign? It, it, it goes to clutter. The more things to read while I'm driving down the road, the more difficult it is for me to identify that this property is Staffers of Kissel Hill, cause you know, I'm, I'm reading that right next door, they're selling roses for so much, a dozen. Flower store. Now, I, I would rather see product advertised inside the store or through other means of advertising. And I'd like to see outside signage be identifying the use of the property. Well, I, you know, I approach it a different way. And I also, I'm, I'm new to the board, and there might have been a lot of other discussion on signage that you guys have had, but, you know, initially I think this is an area that we could improve the ordinance. But I'm not sure that when the comp plan says that we ought to be business friendly, that that necessarily means give them more space. I think business less clutter on other people's signs well as, as other things.
Thanks for coming. Anybody else, you know, chime in at any time here, but.
Yeah, I think part of the challenge, if I could just speak directly to that a little bit, is, you know, when there are such strict limitations on area, it creates a situation where pretty much if you wanted, if you have a property that's unique in any way, or you want to do anything, additionally, you have to go to the zoning hearing board. So what ends up happening is there's a lot of zoning hearing board applications that are submitted, and this is a comment that the county planning commission made as well. And then when you go to the zoning hearing board, sometimes you don't have uniformity or consistent results, because it may depend whether neighbors show up and complain and, and, and things of that nature. So the additional area, and part of the reason I'm showing the Staffer signs, obviously this wouldn't just apply to the Staffers property, but just to show you, I think, you know, what we're proposing, we're not looking to, um,
Claudia, Cindy said that, uh, it's hard to hear you, and I know I had to change the batteries in that microphone. I'm wondering if I had to do it, that one too.
Actually, John, she's fine now. She was just a little too far away earlier.
Okay.
You, Cindy.
I can take my. So that was, that's the rationale behind having it be a little more expansive. It, it does require putting a little bit of trust in the property owners, uh, not to, to go overboard. And I understand that that's a concern that, that planning commissions and boards have. Just two or three more images to show. Um, this would be the grocery store building. You can see now it would be difficult to identify, certainly from Roystown Road, but this is just a, a picture from the parking lot. There again is the Garden Center. Once again, an image from Roystown Road. I think it would be difficult to identify what the use is there. And this is a proposal for the sign on, on Good Drive, another changeable letter sign that they'd like to update. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have. I, I would also like Mr. Norman to come forward and just talk a little bit about, you know, what generated the interest in doing this from Staffers perspective.
If I may.
Yeah, go ahead. I've got another question too.
I agree with Dennis about signage clutter and the constant binging of, of the messages all over town and all these electronic billboards and everything. I do agree that Staffers needs better signage on this building. It's difficult to know that it is the Garden Center when you're coming down Roystown Road. But I don't need, I don't see where you would need the LED sign. Keep advertising, which you do in the newspapers and you do, you know, all over the internet and with the email blast that you do.
So the, the LED sign, actually, that's not something that, uh, that's not a part of this change. That would already be permitted under the zoning ordinance.
And to that point, would that be permitted under the existing ordinance?
Not sure about the area would be compliant of our.
I'm just saying, it looks like the same spacing on the pylons there, or the, the columns.
So I don't think it's much larger of a sign, uh, maybe slightly. It's hard, hard to tell from this image, but dimensionally it's pretty similar. But yeah, the LED is already permitted, and I believe it's, the message can change every minute. Is that right, John?
Thank you.
Hmm.
Thank you.
It seems, uh, I wish.
Less than that, isn't it?
Down at six seconds? It was six seconds, six seconds on the Lime Spring. On the Lime Spring sign.
I'm not sure.
Maybe it's hour.
I'm not sure we can prohibit.
It was, it was a long time.
Buddy, how many other stores have the LED signs up now? First have the LED. Yes.
To that, Steve, how many of the other Staffers have the LED sign?
Currently, we have two others.
The one in Lititz? Where's the other one?
York. York. How many don't have?
Shot Dover doesn't.
The
That's the one I go to.
The signs that you're showing on a building in the pylon, how do they compare to the additional square footage the amendment would give them? In other words, are these right at the edge of the maximum requirement? Or does the amendment allow more sign?
I'm not sure that I could answer that. Perhaps Randy could. If he's still on the call. The reason that we chose the numbers that we did in terms of, of the expansion was we were extending what was done at Lime Spring. So it wasn't as though we were looking and saying, um, let's, let's maximize this, or let's make sure we're just doing the minimum that would allow our package. We looked at Lime Spring and said, let's expand that across the street. So we confirmed that ours was compliant, but I, I can't tell you standing here now, how much additional signage or how little additional signage we'd be able to have with this proposal. This is what we're looking at doing at this time.
They, Dennis, they would be permitted. Two signs. Uh, one for the Roystown Road frontage and one for Good Drive. And both of those signs, um, each of them could be up to eighty square feet maximum.
That's, that's on the Lime, Lime Springs.
No, that's for Staffers.
But it's based on the Lime Springs or not?
The proposal that, um, Claudia's presenting, I believe, was taken from the mixed-use development signs that was, um, correct, correct.
And for the building sign, one foot per two hundred square foot.
So it's one, uh, foot, one square foot of signage per two linear feet of, or I'm sorry, the other way around. Two square feet of signage per one linear foot of exterior building wall space up to a maximum of a hundred square feet per wall.
What's the maximum wall area permitted now?
So right now, it is one, uh, it's one per one up to a maximum of two hundred. And that's not per wall, that's for the whole building. Yeah, right.
So actually, now you could do bigger. You can put more on a building wall now than what they're proposing.
On the building.
Correct, on the building.
Cause now, the proposal was per wall.
Per wall.
A wall decides how big the sign can be.
Right, then you take that.
Right, but on the old one, it was the total wall space gave you the total signs that you could put wherever you wanted.
Wherever you want it, right.
We're only permitted one sign.
Oh, okay.
Right, I mean, so if it weren't for all the zoning relief that Staffers has right now, they would be allowed one two hundred square foot sign for everything that they have out there on the building. So that, that's why they've been to the zoning hearing board many times. And, you know, each time you get a zoning hearing board approval, it's subject to the, the testimony that was presented at the hearing. So anytime they want to change anything out there, and this would apply to other commercial users too, you have to return.
That's been a bit of a hardship getting these signs and approvals, so, I mean, I, I support this request. I think we need to try to do something here.
Is, is, I mean, I, I'm not against it, but on the other hand, I, I, I think it's crazy for us to sit here and say, well, okay, for for this zone and this size parcel, we're gonna have this is a sign ordinance. Across the street, it happens to be a different zone, so they got a different ordinance. And Centerville Road has a lot of this zone going down it. Maybe not all the properties are a one acre or whatever the minimums can be. So now they're gonna have a different sign ordinance.
Well, this ordinance would be for everybody in that zone.
If it meets certain requirements.
If we choose in the future to say we're gonna expand it to the other zones.
No, the other. But Centerville Road is essentially the same zone as Staffers. So anybody over there that has a one acre property can put the same signs up as Staffers does.
And that's okay? Shouldn't they have the right to do?
What, what about, what about the guy that has the property right beside it? It's three quarters of an acre, and he's gonna be limited to a different set of circumstances. Cause this only applies to to this zone with one or more acre property.
Difficult balancing.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Too broadly and have everyone say, well, you've completely opened the can of worms or making it too narrow. So we tend to, to err on the side of narrow and think it can be expanded in the future, but that was the thinking.
What, okay, let me just take another tack. Why don't we take the existing sign ordinance from across the street and apply it to the, this zone and be done with it?
That's sort of what we're doing.
That's basically what she's done, Mr. Fullerton.
Let the township do it so that we don't have to have these different ordinance. Why not just make across the street, apply to more than just that particular zoning district.
And I appreciate that comment. Unfortunately, the timing for the township to do that was not beneficial and did not align with, um, Stobro Company LP and Staffers timeline. They, they approached the township staff to work on a sign ordinance that would be beneficial to both parties, the township and to Staffers. Unfortunately, we were caught up with the wireless facility ordinance. We had a village ordinance that was in the works and a, a couple other ordinances that were in the works on top of the official map and a couple other things that, as far as timing, was just not feasible to get it in and done by this year. So, um, Staffers and Claudia pitched this petition and, uh, moved forward because of, um, the need for Staffers to get this because of their, um, their property needs and their specific business needs.
Their other option is to go before the zoning hearing board, which they've done numerous times and sometimes failed. Cause they don't have a hardship.
I'd, I'd also like to add, I don't know if, if you mentioned it, Claudia, but one of the things that this, um, amendment would allow for, yes, it's particular to a certain size property and a particular zone, specifically the RCC. But it's our largest commercial zon- But it's our largest commercial zone. We have a number of properties that meet the criteria, specifically Stouffer's Lowes. I mentioned those two. I even provided a memo that I also provided the board. Between Stouffer's and the Lowe's property, they've been to the zoning hearing board almost 20 times combined. And most of those were for signage. One of the biggest things with signage is to allow flexibility for users to determine how they want to deploy their sign package. Our current ordinance is not very flexible. When you consider that a business could put up a 200, in all actuality, a business probably doesn't want to spend the money on one 200 square foot sign when they want to put signs on multiple sides of their property to ensure that not just motorists, but anybody coming to the site knows what they're coming for. Specifically with the individual tenant spaces at Lime Spring property, it was given the flexibility and Claudia modeled the building signage after that. Given the flexibility, based on their external wall area, they could have a certain number of signs. But it was unlimited, a number of signs, but it was maxed out for area. So they could deploy those signs any way that they determined, but the ordinance limited on the size of the total area of the signs.
I'm not sure how the zoning hearing boards reviewing signs and identifying hardships as to why the property can't function with a smaller sign. But the point I was trying to make is if we just look at the pylon signs as one example, I know of no reason that the pylon sign can't identify the use with just the top part of that sign. Whatever square footage is in the white area of that sign, in my eye, is adequate enough to identify what the use is on the property. And the Good Drive sign, the same thing goes. Well, why would you give variances or rewrite ordinances to have all that other information out on the side of the road? That's, you know.
That's correct.
Yeah, and it got a variance somehow. I, I don't know how, but if we're looking at, as a planning commission, how to write an ordinance.
I would tend to just, I, I mean, I respectfully disagree. I think the one on the left is providing good information. I, I don't like the one on the right that's existing, and I understand why they want to change.
But we can't control what they write on the sign.
Right, so.
And, and I would like to reiterate that. One of the biggest problems with our ordinance, in keeping with the 2016 decision from the United States Supreme Court, we cannot dictate what is on a sign. We can only dictate the size and location. Correct.
If we limit the size, the most important thing to the user is the name of his business. And everything we go beyond in size that's needed to identify the name of his business is area that he can use to identify product sales, uses on other properties, anything he cared to, because he's permitted to have that much advertising on the road.
I think it kind of boils down to, you know, where you think we ought to go with signs, just in general, right? I think back to when I travel other places, whether it's Williamsburg or a lot of places in Florida or those places. You, it's hard to tell that there's a Target store over there, because there's not some 80-foot sign or whatever it is out on the street that says Target here and Dollar General beside it and everybody else. It's, they've got tree plantings out along the roads.
Well, they zoned it. Most of the upper class, they're doing that and a lot of, the signage is about this low.
There's some that you can't see any.
So someone can't see, they don't, and they don't want the lighting that high.
I'm just saying that a lot of places, a lot of places, the community has decided that we don't want to be sign pollution. I'll call it sign pollution. And so you either, you either agree that signs are absolutely necessary, you have to advertise the price of bananas or whatever, or you say, no, the people know that the Target is in that shopping center or Total Wine is over there, you know, that type of thing.
That might be a good segue, if we could, for Mr. Norman to come up and just talk about the business importance.
Sure. Thanks, Claudia, for your excellent. Thank you, everybody, for allowing me to speak. Cindy, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name's Steve Norman. I'm the chief operating officer for Stouffers of Kissel Hill. I oversee the home and garden line of business. And we're a local company. We've been in business since 1932, operating for 88 years. We are a local business and myself and my other partners, we all live in the communities surrounding our stores. We have a, a long relationship with the township of Hemfield. We have deep roots in the city. And yet, we definitely realize that the business that we operate in, and as business owners, we realize that we need to be more competitive in the marketplace. Both our home and garden and our fresh food side. There's so much competition in the marketplace. And you talked about just recently when you were down in Williamsburg or Florida, the signs here, there, everywhere. There's a lot of retail. Yet we also understand that more recently, not, not all folks have made it. And it's a very challenging time for business. Project. More recent things that have gone in, and retail has made it challenging for any, any of them. For severe. So for these reasons, we're looking for some business improvement. And with that, I mean, number one, we want to freshen up our look and the way we present ourselves, a more vibrant, a more relevant retailer in the community. And I think and help visually, because I'm more visual. Not as familiar with our site, it might bring you to my. But we want to freshen up our look. Vibrant, vibrant. Across the street, there's a lot of competition. And we need to improve our appearance. Have a little higher visibility. We need to feel that we can better convey who we are as a retailer. I think somebody mentioned earlier that when you look at you're driving south to north on Roarstown Road and there's a lot of traffic. That, I think Lancaster County is in the top four of heavily traveled roads, especially that intersection there. If you're traveling this direction. If you're not familiar with our operation, a lot of new folks moving in. All of us, but they're not folks that necessarily know us, you know? We've been in business, you know, since 1932, that's a long time. But not everybody knows us and you can't assume that your community all knows about your business. So you have to make sure. One of the things we need to do is have to look more relevant. So it's a business. That's just a warehouse, right? And it's not going to draw you in. So that is one of the things that we're looking to try and improve ourselves and not be something that is kind of gaudy or distracting for all of us. So what we're looking for is some minimal improvements that are going to be tasteful. So one of the things I just want to stress is as a retailer, you have to ask these questions all the time as you're rolling. Customers really know what kind of business they know the terrific product selection. Specifically about this location. For a customer going down the road, A, to maybe even know where they are, because you can't see the address as you're going up that, that direction. But they're not going to know what's in that building. They're not going to get a sense. Or, so what we're trying to put up on the table is a little bit of showcase inside our business as best we can without having products spilling out into the parking lot. Because our home and garden line of business, we're highly seasonal. And what internally we refer to as a 90-day wonder. It's April, May, and June, and that's our season. That's our year. You know, if we're not operating on a high level in those 90 days, the rest of the year really doesn't add up. And so if you look at this particular year, we were closed in April or to March, so, you know, it really had to get us, get the up and go once we could open our doors in, in May. But on any given year, because we're highly seasonal on the home and garden side, we need to have a little curb appeal without being tacky. And so what we're putting up on the table is just our name. On Roarstown Road, it's not like that traffic is always moving real fast, right? It can come to a screeching halt. And so people can turn to the left or the right, they can look at Lime Springs and look in the windows of either Burger King or the other operators across the street. Or they can look our direction and with the window, right now, you'd see fall, fall decor. You know, you know, in a couple months, you'd see holiday season, decorated Christmas trees. And then it would flip over to outdoor living, our patio. And so it would give a little glimpse of what's going on in that business. Because I would wager to say most people driving past that location on the bottom that are not familiar with Stouffers of Kissel Hill, were not intending to turn in, would not have a clue of what's going on in that business. That's what we're trying to provide for the community is a little bit more direction. Looking for something that's a little bit more in-keeping and modern. So as Claudia mentioned, are moving away from our old, it's wooden, it's on the verge of falling down. So it's predated as a road sign with the changeable letters, which are not real efficient and effective. And I think, you know, as John was looking through the details and say, how often can you change a digital board? Well.
One an hour.
What's that?
Once an hour.
Once an hour?
No.
So once an hour is kind of the rule, you know, by which folks, retailers have to abide by, correct? So right now, we change that letter board once a week, maybe. So to have an opportunity to change it more than once a week, oh my gosh, we'd be so happy, right? And so once an hour would be, you know, not something that I think we would be embracing to that level, because we're doing it once a week, maybe, you know? And it might just say, you know, pumpkins, and that'll stay up for a period of weeks. So, but now we don't have to send our team members out in the weather. Sign falls off and now it doesn't say pumpkins, it says something else, because the sign, you know, it's kind of autocorrect, old-fashioned way, right? It gives us a lot more flexibility, more efficiency, and it's more in-keeping with the modern, modern way signs are looked at. So we really want to greatly identify what our business is, and we feel like this would be more in-keeping with what we can do, not splashing the side of the buildings, altitude of the signs, just telling a few things, outdoor living, garden. Those things would be identifiers for categories that would allow our customers to make a decision to turn into our parking lot. But also from the other direction. That business, Stouffers of Kissel Hill, you're not quite sure what's in there, especially during the portion of the year. So it doesn't explain everything about us, but it's enough that would maybe get some decision-making going as people are traveling, traveling north and south. So in that, we're trying to improve our brand, our brand awareness, as every business is extremely important. Better compete in today's very competitive marketplace. Believe that these signs will allow and begin to answer some of the questions that I said earlier. As people are traveling past our store, do they know what kind of business we are? They know the terrific products that we carry. By having a few signs strategically and tastefully placed, you can answer quite a number of those questions, which we can't currently. So we're extremely proud to be operating in this community. It's very strong for us. We have very loyal customers currently, and we want to grow that. At this point, how can we make this happen? So I want to thank you all again for allowing myself to, for you, and would ask for your consideration on this project. Look forward to your support on our business. Questions. Okay, thank you.
There are no additional questions. We are, of course, seeking your recommendation of approval of the text amendment.
One structural or mechanical question. Is or does these changes to the ordinance affect or still maintain the requirement for maximum height, separation from a street, separation of, of freestanding signs? Are those things covered somewhere in our ordinance? It looked to me briefly, when I looked at our sign ordinance, that it's in there for other districts, but not, would not be in this business district.
Yes, it, yes, it is, Dennis.
You feel good about that? Okay.
Yeah, our current ordinance has a table, has an attachment that lists the setbacks, the maximum height and everything.
You had on the screen, it's not in my ordinance. I don't know if there's appendices or stuff.
It, it is.
Okay, so I, I don't have that. Then I'm wondering if somehow the text of this ordinance or the wording on that appendices couldn't relate to each other. This new ordinance would say, notwithstanding the requirements.
Yeah, I think the ordinance does specifically refer to the table and those regulations. So it, it was drafted so that it all is cohesive.
Would anybody have any other discussion points? Cindy, is there anybody on chat Zoom that's interested?
There's not.
Okay, then if there's no further discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
Your chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the supervisors of the Stowbro's request to amend the commercial sign ordinance in the RCC zone as presented.
I'll second that.
Who was that, Matt? The man, okay. We have a motion by Mr. Roar, second by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the.
that we recommend approval of the Stowbro Company RCC Zone sign ordinance of text amendment. Mr. Beck?
This is Will. Mr. Detter? Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Biggs?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
I'm going to vote nay.
I have six to one in favor of the motion.
And, and I, I just want to say, it's not because I don't want Stowbro to succeed. It's just that I think this is a hodgepodge approach to signage, and I think the township should figure out a better way to do it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, John, you got some new plans to introduce tonight.
Hey, Mr. Fullerton. We have received three new plans. They're currently under review by staff and DMA. The first one is Traditions of America, Phase Two Final Plan. Next one is the Nolt Road Cluster Development Preliminary Plan and Brookside Phase Two Sheets, a final plan.
Is Brookside part of the new hospital area or part of the industrial complex?
It gets, it gets a little confusing. The actual name of the development is Penn State Medical Center, Penn State Health Langston Medical Center and Brookside. Brookside is the property to the east.
Okay, but what I was referring to was the opposite of Yellow Goose Road. Yellow Goose Road East.
This is.
That's not those, that's not at that intersection, is it?
No, it's, it's at Harrisburg Pike and State Road.
Yeah, it's further to the south.
It'll be enterprise, an enterprise property that is accessible off of Yellow Goose. And technically, that is part of Brookside, but it's going to be kind of treated separately because the creek separates it and it's only going to be accessed via Yellow Goose.
This is the one where Penn State, where the hospital is going to go across, right?
Pardon me, Anne?
Where the road from the hospital to the office buildings on the east side is going to go. It's one of the.
That's correct. With the realignment of State Road, this will be on the east side of State Road.
Is that the restaurant that they originally talking about?
No.
Okay.
No, they, they had originally, their original plan called for a convenience store and a, not necessarily, not a restaurant, but a, a some sort of fast food, quick-serve.
Right.
Type establishment.
I was hoping it's going to be a Trader Joe's.
But this shouldn't be confused with up across from Kellogg's. There's a lot there that may get a development at some point.
That, that will be probably in within the next month or two.
But that's not Brookside.
Is that going to be a hotel?
No, nobody's built hotels now. Well, I'll say in the commercial banking world.
White's right, the hotel industry is taking a dive. Hotel industry is taking a dive. COVID, COVID is really crushing it.
Except for at the beach.
The RBOs are killing them.
Yeah.
Yep. As of right now, our next scheduled planning commission meeting is the ninth of September. I don't know if we'll have one. I don't know if we'll have any plans, but presumably Dutch Valley, Dutch Valley Auto Works would certainly be considered for the September planning commission meeting. I, I provided paper copies of the new wireless facility ordinance that was adopted and the planning commission bylaws. I know the, the bylaws had been something, a discussion item. And I'd been wanting to get them to you, but with, due to COVID and everything like that, it was a little difficult. So I know Mr. Caldas isn't here. I will get, I have a copy for him.
If we don't have a full agenda, can we put that on as an item for upcoming meeting?
Sure.
There's been some discussion about, we just ought to take a look at it. It's been a long time. And a couple, these things have changed, specifically the alternates role and stuff like that. And so we ought to just go through that and yeah, updated or at least read it as the way it is. Any old business?
No, sir.
And Cindy, is there anybody for public comment that's not in the building?
There's not.
Okay. Well, thank you for tending to things, Cindy, keep us on track. And John, for all your work and setting things up. There's no further business. Meeting is adjourned. So, Mr. Detter?
Thank you.
Stick around. Stick around.
I can't, how about you?
I don't on the internet anymore.
From last year. I ran into, I have some other envelopes on my thing and I keep forgetting it.